Thank you, everyone.
We're going to start with an Elections Board meeting before we go into the Commissioners Meeting. So I hereby call to order the meeting of the York County Board of Elections for May 6.
I'll make a motion to approve all conditions for receipt of the grant proceeds pursuant to the coronavirus aid relief and economic security, the CARES Act, to be used for the prevention of preparation for and response of COVID-19 either domestically or internationally for matters relating to the 2020 federal election cycle.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve all conditions for receipt of grant proceeds pursuant to the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2020 to make payments for activities to improve the administration of elections for federal office, including to enhance election technology and make election security improvements as authorized under Sections 101, 103, and 104 of the Help America Vote Act.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to recommend for purchase approval by the Board of Commissioners a second amendment to the Voting System Agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Voters Registration and Elections and Dominion Voting Systems Denver, Colorado, for the purchase of one image cast central kit high-speed scanner. The license and warning fees, warranty fees to start in year two. The total cost for the high-speed scanner is $25,000. Commencing year two of the licensing, warranting fees will be $4,075 per year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I guess, Michelle, and maybe Steve, but this is actually a purchase of another scanner to provide the technology and high-speed to actually count the ballots on Election Day? Okay, good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the reallocation of the following polling places pursuant to 25 PS to 27, 26 for the June 20, June 2, 2020 primary, and they're as listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And Michelle? Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to comment. We recognized early that we'd gotten some feedback from previous elections that we had locations that, for whatever reason, capacity issues, things like that, parking. The Board of Elections has been working very hard to look for new polling locations. So the polling locations that are listed here will be improved locations from the previous location. So I don't know if you have anything else you want to add, Michelle, to that?
I would just mention that these 14 locations were previously identified, you know, some time ago. We've been working on them for some time. Some have been in place now, and we have leases in effect. But those were ones that we already knew needed to be relocated.
So our hope is that these will improve the voter experience when they go to vote on Election Day.
And these 12 or 14 places, will they get notified, all the voters in these locations, about the polling place change?
Yes, they will be placed in the Shore system, and they will receive new cards.
Right. Okay, good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the next is some redistricting information. It's not a motion, but the new polling locations as a result of the final redistricting of West Mannheim Township petition. And we now have West Mannheim District 1 at the Hanover First Church of God. We have West Mannheim District 2, which is South Hanover Y MCA. And we have West Mannheim District 3, which is St. David's Lutheran Church. And this isn't a motion, this is for information purposes. But, Michelle, I guess, do we go through the court system to change these?
Yes. So the Elections Board had previously redistricted West Mannheim Township. We, you then approved the filing of the petition with the court. The court entered the order approving that. All locations were notified. Those new voters were already placed in the system. This is, again, just to sort of circle back, you know, come full circle, to make sure that we have in our minutes that we acknowledge that the court entered that order, and these are the new locations. Because the petition itself doesn't necessarily have to include the new locations, just that we're redistricting and we give them sort of a geographic area of those districts.
So for those out there watching and listening, West Mannheim was the largest precinct in York County. And, again, to improve the voter experience, the Board of Elections and Board of Commissioners decided to reevaluate that district and split it from one to three. So, again, this is our plan to make the voter experience better and more seamless.
Okay, and then four.
Item number four.
Number four is discussion of the consolidation as permitted by Act 12 of 2020. And it's an article about emergency provisions for 2020 general primary election, Section 1802B. And that's up for discussion. I'd ask maybe, Michelle, to discuss this.
So the, the act that was just passed at the beginning of April of 2020, Act 12, allows the counties to consolidate polling locations. So previously, the law only allowed you to redistrict. And when you did redistrict, you had to have polling locations that were either adjacent or adjoining the prior district. This new law, only for the primary, allows us to take another look at whether we need to consolidate some districts because of COVID-19 issues or the lack of poll workers, the lack of locations that are compliant. And so I wanted to raise that issue to allow the, you know, Board of Elections to consider implementing that change in the law, should, you know, our Elections Bureau be having some difficulty with finding locations for the upcoming primary on June 2. We have until next Wednesday to make a final decision. And that consolidation plan can be done by resolution and approved by the Board of Elections.
Okay.
Anything else? So in light of looking at possible consolidation of polls, I would suggest we do a recess.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recess this meeting until a later date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we are recessed to a later date. Okay, so now I will call the Commissioners Meeting of May 6 to order. And we are blessed to have our veteran, Scott Castle, lead us in the pledge today. And we're also honored to have John Kleindance from CS Davidson to lead us in the invocation. So, Scott?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see all of you in person, for a change, brother.
Great to be seen, John.
It's great to be seen, I'm sure. Thanks for your leadership today. It's been great. Join me in prayer, please. Lord, as our county's leaders meet and deal with issues, both regular and extraordinary, from business as usual to new and life-threatening, we ask that you be with them. Keep them strong and guide them to continue to make the best decisions, as they have already done. Give them understanding as they debate issues and crises. Give them integrity as they deal with others. Give them empathy as they deal with us, their constituents. Give them courage. You know that the burdens and responsibilities they bear are greater than we realize. Bless and guide and protect them as they serve the people of York County. All of these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, John.
All right. On to item four of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Make a motion to approve a grant modification between the County of York on behalf of the Adult Probation Department and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for budget line item adjustments for the continued implementation of the York County intermediate punishment programs, including the day reporting center and the amount of $520,018 over two years, with no additional county match for the period of July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And just, so everybody knows, I did question the dates that were 2014 and 2015, and this is retroactive grant that they are correct.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Weatherproofing Technologies, Inc., Beachwood, Ohio, to provide two comprehensive roof inspections for a total cost of $45,035 for the period of May 6, 2020, to May 6, 2021, utilizing the Keystone Purchasing Network contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and CM Detention Products LLC, Sherwood, Illinois, to retrofit 19 detention doors at a cost of $133,600 under a PA Coast Guard's contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Just for information, the prison board did look at this and made the recommendation of the board.
Great. Any further discussion? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and Monumentum ECM LLC, Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, for document management software license maintenance from June 25, 2020, to June 25, 2021, for total cost of $99,824 under a PA Coast Guard's contract. Payments will be made as followed: 50% on May 25, 2020, and the remaining balance on August 25, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Questions? Concerns? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
I'll make a motion to approve a second amendment to the Voting Systems Agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Voters Registration and Elections and Dominion Voting Systems Denver, Colorado, for the purchase of one image cast central kit high-speed scanner. License and warranty fees to start in year two. And the total cost for the high-speed scanner is $25,000. Commencing year two of the licensing, warranty fees will be $4,075 per year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I think we just recommended this in the prior board meeting. And I think, Michelle, and maybe you would know this, and I would ask Mark, but this is something that may be covered in the different grants and monies we may be getting back from the federal or state government?
Yeah, we believe that, yeah, that this type of purchase would definitely be covered under those guidelines.
But I believe that we made that decision based on the fact that it is probably going to be covered as opposed to leasing.
Right, right. Right. Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Feasors, Inc., Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, to provide a dietary software package for the cost of $200 per month for a period of May 6, 2020, to May 6, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11.
I'll make a motion to approve CS Davidson, Inc., to solicit bids for the York County Morgue Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. John, any comments you wanted to share?
John, you want to maybe just talk about the process and how long ago this started? We were talking about this and where the facilities at?
Sure, this project started, oh, at least a year ago, when we did a feasibility study to see if the morgue and the coroner's office could fit in space, unused space out at the prison. We determined that it would. We were authorized by the Commissioners to proceed and do a design. Part one of the coroner's office relocation was done using the Keystone Project, so that's under construction, just about done. This phase is actually the morgue portion. This will be the coolers and the equipment necessary for operation as a morgue. So we've been going through the design process with the design team. We finished that. I believe that was presented to the Commissioners. This is the next logical step. So far, we're working on cost estimates. This will get you actual bids. This will get you actual costs. Then it'll come back to the Commissioners for a decision.
John, once we get the bids coming in, how long are those bids valid for?
Normally, 60 days, but if it relies on financing, you can hold them for 120 days. And that's, that's the statute. You can usually negotiate with the contractors to extend it longer.
And do you personally have any knowledge of, you know, people talk about timing and bidding and things like that with the current situation things? Do you think we'll have a good response from the different companies that will be interested in this project?
We'll bid the job on Penn Bid, which will widen the pool of potential bidders. Construction is so screwed up right at the moment, I don't know what's going to happen. We anticipate a lot of bids, but who knows? I mean, with everybody going back to work, and I think the window of opportunity is now, though, because they're talking about another federal program to plow money into infrastructure. If they do that, the contractors are going to all be fully occupied. So I think it's good timing. I do anticipate good bidding. Let's hope.
And construction companies now, under our current status, are allowed to do construction work?
They are.
Yes.
They are under controlled protocol.
Right. Okay.
So just to reiterate to the public, so Phase 1 of the coroner's office is just about completed, and that's really relocating office space from the existing facility at Pleasant Acres out to the prison. So this will be Phase 2, actual portion for the morgue, for the ability to do autopsies and have cooler space for, for decedents. The Board of Commissioners felt very strongly about putting this out for bid and doing our due diligence, as with any project that will require financial support from the budget. So, thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12.
Motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office, York County Human Services Department, Family Engagement Unit, and the York City Police Department to define their respective responsibilities with regard to the group violence intervention strategy supported through the National Network for Safe Communities to address violent crime in the community.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. For those of you out there that aren't aware of the Group Violence Initiative Program, it is a wonderful program that these departments have been leading, targeting some at-risk populations. So this is a really good thing for our community here. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13.
Motion to approve all conditions for receipt of the grant proceeds pursuant to the coronavirus aid relief and economic security, the CARES Act, to be used for the prevention of preparation for and response to COVID-19, either domestically or internationally, for matters relating to the 2020 federal election cycle.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14.
Motion to approve all conditions for receipt of the grant proceeds pursuant to the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2020 to make payments to states for activities to improve the administration of elections for federal office, including to enhance election technology and make election security improvements as authorized under Sections 101, 103, 104 of the Help America Vote Act.
Our second motion.
A motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15.
Michelle, do you wish to recess for the public adoption, or for the hearing on the adoption?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can announce it and then, and then recess for a hearing just to have a discussion about it.
Right, so you make the announcement, then, looking at having, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the adoption of ordinance 2020-01, which updates York County Parks Recreation Rules and Regulations. And you are asking that we recess to have that discussion.
So I'll second the motion to recess the meeting right now. Yep.
Right.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Michelle, do you want to go over what we're doing here?
Yeah, we need to vote.
Oh, yeah, we need to vote, okay.
So, all those in favor to recess signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we are recessed from the Commissioners Meeting.
Right, and essentially, we open the hearing on the ordinance. So the ordinance of that we're requesting that the Commissioners consider is an ordinance that updates and makes some changes to the parks' rules and regulations. And the bulk of those changes are going to be some definition updates to include e-bikes and pedicycles with power assist. Also, with regard to filmmaking and photography in our park systems by permits. We've removed some, some sections in the rules and regulations that would just allow a more broad use of some of the facilities. And, as I said, the perm, and the permitting system for larger events, we've actually removed some of those additional sort of restrictions or impediments to using the parks for some of those types of issues. But those are the bulk of the changes. There was some updates back in 2017. So other than sort of an overall cleanup, because we were including the e-bikes and the pedicycles, there hasn't been any major changes to the rules and regulations. And these are the documents that are provided to the public when they request use of, of the park facilities in York County. I will note that the pedicycle and e-bike does follow federal and state mandates regarding the definitions. It really is, it is, it's a limited use of those types of activities because we do have a lot of people that walk through the park systems as well. And so it'll only be allowed in certain parks also.
And this has been approved by the Parks Board?
This has been approved by the Parks Board, and this has been in the works since sometime last year. We've been working on these changes.
So in the spirit of this being a public hearing, I'll just check with Mark Walters to see if anyone that's watching on Facebook might have a question related to the ordinance. Okay? Any further discussion? Nope.
I just, I just know last year, as being here last year, as one of the Commissioners, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of emails, a lot of commentary from the general public about the use of e-bikes in the parks. So the Parks Board made a, took a look at it, made a decision. I think they made the right decision to have limited use in the parks for people. Some people have disabilities and want to use these bikes, and it's probably a very good move.
Okay. So with that, we need a motion to reconvene the Commissioners Meeting.
I'll make, go ahead. I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we are reconvened, moving on to item number 17.
Motion to approve the adoption of ordinance 2020-01, which updates the York County Parks and Recreation Rules and Regulations.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 18.
Motion to approve the tax refund register 2020-07, authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $3,383.09.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 19.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of, May 6, 2020, totaling $6,704,820.16.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 19. There were no executive sessions since our last Commissioners Meeting. On to other business. I do see that Suli's here from the Economic Alliance. Suli, did you have any updates you wanted to share today? Okay.
Just to follow up on some updates from last week, we shared that the state loan financing program, we have received a notification that now 31 loans have been approved totaling over 2.3 million in business support coming right here into our local communities. Again, your friendly reminder to view the websites and share the website information for preparedyork.com as it continues to list information related to COVID-19 for our communities. A couple of updates that we wanted to let you and the public be aware of. As we've shifted many of our events to a virtual platform, we have a couple that we wanted to share. One next week, which will be our Legislative Luncheon, that will take place on May 14 at noon, and that will welcome members from our state delegation to share an update on things currently up in Harrisburg, as well as the impact of COVID-19 in our communities. That will be hosted via Zoom, and the information for that is available on Facebook and on the Prepared York website. As we've shared in the last two weeks, we've hosted a series of virtual career fairs, and we've been able to capture participation and reach from over 1,000 participants and views on social media. This week, we will have the fair on Friday at 12 o'clock. We will feature employers and businesses from Aerotech, Churchill Dwight, and a local State Farm agent, as well as HR professionals that are offering free resume assistance for anyone impacted through COVID-19. This career fair is also offered bilaterally, in Spanish. We're just continually to, we're just translating all of that information live during the session. And then, one last update related to the county's economic action plan, as we've shared, the website for that is yorkcountyeap.org. There is a community survey on that website that we encourage you all and the public at large viewing this today's session to please take, to let us know what do they want to see for York County moving forward. It's, it takes a couple of minutes, but it's a great way to capture everyone's feedback. So, and since I've been able to come over the past couple of weeks to share some updates, just wanted to give some additional information regarding the, the impact that we've been able to provide to our local community, our businesses. In the last six weeks, we fielded over 550 inquiries and business engagements. As we noted, a lot of our events have shifted to a virtual platform, and through that, we've been able to capture over 1,500 participants. And as I just shared with the economic action plan, over this, over this week, we will have a couple of working group sessions just to dive further on what constituents and stakeholders would like to see for York County moving forward. And we're happy to share that there will be over 300 participants tuning in for those working group sessions, some starting today and through tomorrow. So, just a lot of really exciting parts for, for York County through this very unforeseen time. So thank you again for letting us come in and share this information with you.
I do one question.
Absolutely.
I remember it came up last week, I think, a comment on Facebook. I know that the virtual job fairs have gotten a lot of traction, and I think that's great. There was some concern that they, those sessions were getting full and people couldn't get in, so I'm...
Yeah, so our, we've upped all of our Zoom membership, if you will, in the loving, in the loving world of technology and having to adapt every day to it. We now have over 500 participants. The virtual job fair, or career fair, is also streamed through Facebook, so it's a Facebook Live session, and that's where we're able to see the amount of views and the reach that the sessions have. So we've also incorporated breakout rooms into them, so any participant and attendee can go in through a Zoom virtual room and have a further conversation with the employer if they have other questions that they wouldn't necessarily want to broadcast in the session. Fantastic.
Yeah, just a question. I know on the, on the national news and things, you know, people were talking about the unemployment rate and where it's going and the difficulties we have. But they're also talking about a lot of heroes and a lot of different forms of business, of business, like working at grocery stores and plants and things like that. We have a lot of those facilities here in York County, so for the public to know, there are positions that are open, that are available now, that people are hiring.
Yes, absolutely. As I shared before the virtual career fair, we've been able to invite manufacturers, staffing agencies that work with manufacturing clients, private public service organizations, and again, on preparedyork.com, we have a Workforce Connections Job Portal. There are over 30 companies featured there. You know, I'd be happy to mouth them all off to you, but I would love to encourage everyone to visit preparedyork.com.
Good.
Great, thank you, thank you. Just two other things under other business. The Board of Commissioners mentioned last week that we were launching York County Strong Recovery Task Force that has been launched, and the leaders of the focus areas are already engaged in, in meetings and discussions. So I just wanted to follow up and let you know that has been launched, and our community leaders are hard at work, and the Board of Commissioners are certainly looking forward to getting their initial and final reports, which we will then obviously share with you all as the public. The other thing I wanted to mention, for those of you that don't know, today is National Nurses Day, and we just wanted to pause and say a big thank you to all of the nurses out there. We thank you for your compassion, for your caring, for your dedication on the front lines, especially during this difficult time. So just a big thank you from York County and the Board of Commissioners. We really appreciate what you do. And with that.
I'd like to say something. I'd like to also abate that comment. I have a, a wife and daughter who are nurses on the front lines of this stuff, so my heart goes out to those guys, and thank you for what you guys do.
And, and one other thing, I just thought about, we were sitting here talking, and you were talking about some things that we've been doing, the commissioners, just so the public knows, we've actually had both our United States Senators, Senator Toomey and Senator Casey, get in touch with us and ask us to be on a call with them in the next couple of days. So I think that the people should know that we are keeping in contact with our elected officials, whether at the federal level, the state level, or the local level, in trying to coordinate all these activities, because we all understand this is tough times we're going through. So I appreciate their extending their, you know, information to us at the county level.
We actually have, in the Recovery Task Force, there is a focus area around local government. We recognize that, you know, we have 72 municipalities in the county, and we certainly want to do our best to help them as they start to open back up. So with that, we're going to move on to the period of public comment. We do have an individual who submitted some commentary to be shared today, so we're going to ask Mark Walters to share that. Just to remind our viewers, this is a period of public comment. The Board of Commissioners will not take questions or comment further on public comment that's made. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark Walters.
I guess we'll start with the comment you'd referred to. This was sent via email from Todd Kiefer, resides in Newberry Township. "Today, I come before you and my fellow citizens of York County to request that you act with utmost urgency in recognition of an additional public health and safety crisis that has arisen as a result of following state lockdown orders in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is time we end the collateral damage this is causing. You can do that by reopening our county in spite of state policy. The time to do it is now." Monday morning, Kevin Schreiber of the York County Economic Alliance laid out the basis for the damage on a local radio show. He said that 4,000 businesses in York County employing 75,000 individuals have been forced to close. He added that by a study they commissioned, 20 to 30% of those businesses will never return. In addition, he said that only 20 to 30% of businesses have been able to secure Paycheck Protection Program funding under the Federal CARES Act. In other words, he told us to expect harms that are likely to linger far longer than the virus itself. Current damage is from only about six to seven weeks of being shut down. The longer it goes, the worse it will get. Unemployment and isolation are strong predictors of stress, anxiety, and depression that can express itself in things like drug overdoses, suicide, domestic violence, spouse and child abuse, and increased alcohol consumption. Our district attorney has expressed his concern over what he is seeing. Twice recent postings on the York County District Attorney Facebook page featured articles about increased child abuse in the presence of lockdowns. On his personal Facebook page, Mr. Sunday commented in discussion of an article he posted about local spikes in drug overdoses that, quote, "The collateral damages will be devastating," end quote. Anecdotally, I have spoken with local police officers from two different departments who are concerned by what they are seeing. Sadly, our officials in Harrisburg have taken little notice to negative consequences of their actions, even as blanket lockdowns make less sense the more we learn. This virus is highly specific in its seriousness to elderly and those with existing underlying conditions. Young people in good physical condition are at very low risk, yet we're pursuing a policy that acts as if each new infection is like every other. What started as actions to protect hospital capacity have mutated into an irrational obsession with preventing each new infection, as many hospitals sit empty and have even laid off staff. Medical tests and procedures that themselves can prevent deaths are being delayed. This comes as we know that viral pandemics only end when community immunity is acquired, either through exposure or vaccination. Slowing the rate of new infections prolongs the process rather than ending it quickly. That may be wise if a vaccine is quickly available, but we're being told that may be over a year away. We cannot afford to remain locked down that long, just consider what six or seven weeks has done. Perhaps our biggest mistake has been not approaching the problem with the goal of total harm minimization, but when a small handful of people in Harrisburg are calling the shots without consulting the representatives of the people, we're seeing the big picture, we get what we've got. Trade-offs exist in everything we do. We accept many more highway deaths than necessary because getting around at 35 miles per hour is not acceptable to us. It's in your power to end this. Reopening our county without permission may have its own consequences, but I think it's likely we would not long find ourselves alone. Other counties are on the ropes also and maybe need just a spark of courage. Doing what is right for our overall condition must start somewhere. Finally, consider this. In 1957 and 58, what was known as the Asian Flu Pandemic swept the world. I was in first grade. There was no panic, no schools or businesses were closed, our economy was not destroyed. According to the CDC, 116,000 Americans died and 1.1 million worldwide when our population was about half the size of today. The virus ran its course and then ended because that is the natural way these things work. Chances are, had we reacted as we are now, those death numbers would have been about the same, just spread over a longer time. So what is different today, and why are we doing this to ourselves? Now please do the right thing, thank you. Again, that was from Todd Kiefer of Newberry Township.
Thank you for your comment, Todd. Any other comments, Mark?
Lindsay O'Loughlin with York Dispatch regarding the additional scanner, will that be used to scan mail-in ballots?
Yes.
Yes.
Janelle Danner Stow said, "County employees back to work?" Question mark.
At this point, we're, we're not going to make any comments on personnel issues.
Lindsay also asked, and this one might be better suited for the coroner. I noticed at one point Pam was watching, if she is, she's more than welcome to chime in in the comment thread, or Lindsay can reach out to her. Question about autopsies, does the county plan to hire a forensic pathologist to do autopsies in-house at the new morgue instead of sending them to Lehigh Valley?
That's a question for our coroner, so we'll see that she gets that question.
Gotcha. Someone else, "Our business support of the Paycheck Protection Program loan is unhelpful when we aren't allowed to return to work. Now we just have a giant loan to pay back and no income with which to do so." Jen Peterson, thank you, Todd, for your voice. And one thing I want to mention, if you need it, because we don't want it to be overcrowded and people taking resources from, who don't need it as much as people who do, but there is another pop-up food distribution site in Glen Rock, and that is going to be Saturday, May 9th, at the Susquehannock High School. And this is a news release I'm looking at from the York County Food Bank, which I will share with various outlets to further push that message. That's all I got.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and now we're going to move on to Salary Board.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements, where a set forth in the York County Employee Handbook, York County Policy Manual, for the following departments, with no additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted, as stated in the Internal Salary Board detail, there are Departments 17 Information Services, Department 31 Juvenile Probation, and Department 70 E-911.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and that concludes our meeting for today. Thank you, everyone, be well and be safe.